JP, would you mind getting the door?
Yeah.
On the door, I think I have 6:30. All right, ready to go?
Oh, Christine from our office has a request, if you could say. This is October 24th.
Okay.
So she knows, because she's caught it from me, so she's yelled at me.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Jack Courier. I serve you as Chair of the Nashua Zoning Board. This is the Nashua Zoning Board. This is the regular October 24th meeting. If you're here for the Board of Aldermen, that will be downstairs in a short while. If you don't have a copy of the agenda tonight, I think it's on the back table, so feel free to get a copy for yourself. And if anybody has a cellphone, I ask that you put it in the silent mode or turn it off for this meeting, I'd appreciate it. And before we get going hearing the cases, I'll spend a few moments just going over the rules of what we do tonight. First, the other folks up here, to my right, to your left, is Mrs. Mary Ellen McKay. She serves as our clerk. Going around the table is Mr. Steve Lionel and Robert Shaw, they're full-time members. And at the other end is Mr. JP Boucher, who serves as our Vice Chair. To my left is Mr. Carter Falk, and he is the, he serves on the city staff as a Deputy Planning Manager. This meeting by law is recorded. It's actually rerecorded here in three venues. It's recorded on TV, and I'd like to thank in advance Tim, he's the man behind that wooden door who's capturing all the action. It'll be replayed on Nashua Public TV later this week. There's also, this meeting is also recorded audio. In a few days, you can stream it if you go to NashuaNewHampshire.gov and kind of click down to the zoning board. And then, this is also, the minutes are also transcribed onto a written record, and that is the actual official record, should any of these proceedings rise up to a court case. So because we're, this meeting is recorded, I ask that only one person speak at a time, and who's ever speaking will need to speak into the microphone. And I'll be asking you to state your name and address, because we need that for the record. If we don't have a name and address in there, it'd likely be stricken from the record if an issue were to come up. And if the spelling of your name isn't obvious, I might be asking you to spell it, so we could be sure to get it right. So we're here tonight to hear variances and special exceptions. And variances and special exceptions are from this book of Nashua zoning code. This Board doesn't make this code. This Board seeks or hears cases of waivers from this code. And there's two types of waivers we're hearing tonight. One is a variance, and other are special exceptions. They're slightly different, so I'll read briefly the five criteria by New Hampshire state law that three or more voting members of this Board need to identify in order to approve a variance. The first of five criteria is that the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Number two is that the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Number three is that substantial justice is done. Number four is that the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. And number five is that literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. That's the criteria for a variance. We're also hearing some cases for special exceptions. The bar is a little bit lower. And there's five criteria for a special exception. And just the difference is, a variance is a use that is not permitted in this book. A special exception is a use that is permitted in this book, but it is permitted if it meets this five criteria. One is that that use is in fact listed in this book, and those before us tonight with special exceptions, they are listed in this book. Number two is that the requested use or activity will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Number three is that the requested use or activity will not overload any public water, drainage, or sewer system, or any other municipal system. Number four is that any special exception regulations for the use or activity set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled. And number five is that the requested use or activity will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood. So that's the five criteria that by law this Board would need to find to grant a special exception. So the way we hear testimony tonight is each case is in two components. The first component is the public hearing. That's where we hear from you, the public. Any party of interest has a right to speak. And the public hearing begins with the applicant, and the applicant will have up to 15 minutes to make their case. We have a clock here to help us keep us on track. That'll tick down from 15 minutes. So the applicant has up to 15 minutes to present their case. It's likely that the Board will probably ask questions along the way or at the conclusion of the testimony. After the applicant has spoken, anybody else who wants to speak in favor of the case will have up to five minutes to present their case. After all positive testimony is heard, anyone with questions, concerns, or opposition to a case will have up to five minutes to present their arguments. If there is opposition, each person will again have up to five minutes to speak their opposition. If there is opposition, sometimes there isn't, if there is opposition, then the applicant will have five minutes back at the microphone to address the opposition we've heard. And then, the final say, you might say, is one and only one person who has spoken in opposition will have a final five minutes to present their arguments for what the applicant just said. That is, if there is opposition in the first place. So that, what I've just described is the public hearing. After the public hearing ends, the public meeting begins, and that's where the five of us deliberate on the case, and we're likely to come up with a conclusion of approving it, denying it. Sometimes it's a table. If, at the end, when we draw a conclusion, if it's not tabled, that is, if there's any party that feels aggrieved, the next step for you to do would be to write a request to rehear. In other words, you're thinking, "We got it wrong." And you have up to 30 days to write us a rehearing request. And if you're interested in doing that, you could give Mr. Falk a call during the day, and he could walk you through that process. If we get a rehearing request, we'll act on it as quick as we can. But it's important to say that whatever decision we make tonight, there's this 30-day window of appeal that's open. So if something is approved, I'll caution you now that if within 30 days there's a rehearing request, and we decide to rehear it, that approval is actually stayed. So I will be cautioning you to be cautious of the 30-day window of appeal before you might want to start a project if it is approved. If we act on a rehearing request or don't decide to rehear it, the next step for an aggrieved party would be to go to Hillsborough County Superior Court. So that is the process by which we're going through tonight. Let's see, I think I've covered everything. Before we get going, are there any questions from anyone in the audience? All right, there's a couple changes to tonight's agenda, and I'm just going to pull up my copy right here. As you might see, if you have a copy in front of you, case number one is tabled. And what was that put off to?
The second meeting in November.
Second meeting in November. So if you're here for two to four, Henry David Drive, that's going to be the second meeting in November. The applicant requested that. And then, case number three, 29 Marlowe Street, is going to be the...
That'll be re-advertised, it'll be going on the November 14th meeting.
November 14th. So if there's anybody here for Henry David Drive or Marlowe Road, that, we're not going to be hearing that tonight. Is there anyone here for that? Okay. We do have an alderman in the audience tonight, and there's, as I mentioned, the aldermanic meeting starts shortly downstairs. And it's been our procedure that if there's an alderman who wants to speak on a case, we open the public hearing on that case first, just to have the alderman present whatever they want to present, and then close the public hearing on that and go back to our normal agenda, because it just so happens that we overlap with the aldermanic schedule. So with that, are we ready to get going? With that, I believe, Mr. Shoneman, you were here to speak about Grace Fellowship?
Yes, that's correct.
Which is listed on our case as case number nine, and I'll read it into the record. It's Grace Fellowship of Nashua is the owner, Paul Berube is the applicant. The address is 43 Main Street. And there's a request for the following variances. One, to exceed maximum wall sign area, 65 square feet is permitted, 84 square feet is existing. Two additional 96-square-foot signs are proposed for a total of 276 square feet. Number two is to exceed maximum number of wall signs. Three are permitted, three are existing, and two additional wall signs are proposed for a total of five. And number three is to exceed maximum wall sign height. 20 feet is permitted. Two additional signs are proposed at 28 feet in height. And this is in the mixed-use zone, Ward Three. So if, Mr. Alderman, if you'd like to come and, again, give us your name and address for the record, and walk us through your testimony, we'd like to hear what you have to say.
Thank you very much. My name is David Shoneman, and my address is 10 Webster Street, here in Nashua. I'm the alderman for Ward Three. One of my duties as alderman is to serve on the Historic District Commission. And Historic District Commission met last night. We've met a number of times, of course. We heard this case in that venue, and we approved it there, if it's okay, if I can relate that. And I'm here to emphasize why, as an alderman, and why the Historic District Commission, in my view, approved that. I would also like to say, just for the record, I don't think it's a conflict of interest, but I attend church at Gate City Church, Grace Fellowship Church. I have no financial interest in the church. I'm not here to recommend anything that would give me any kind of financial advantage, but I don't want anyone to later say, "Well, he didn't tell us he's part of that church." I'm here as the Ward Three Alderman. As an alderman, we're very concerned about development in the city, or redevelopment, revitalization in the city, particularly in the downtown area. Studies have shown that a lively downtown, and there's a lot of things that can be done to create that, really help a lot to increase property values, to revitalize a city. One of the things that I've learned over the months is that, one of the aspects, one of the best aspects for revitalizing a city is to develop what is called an authentic sense of place. Authentic means true to the history of a city. I think what Pastor Paul is attempting to do here is not just advertise Bonhoeffer's Cafe more, but to develop a plan that has authentic history in place. If we look at the building that faces Main Street, Bonhoeffer's, the wall that is up high above the cafe itself, that faces Main Street, you can see some faded lettering that was for, I think Fletcher's Appliance, or some store like that. It had, or maybe it was a grocer, actually, I think. So it may have had things like butter, and eggs, and flour, and you can still sort of see those as faded lettering on the wall. And the idea here is to put up a similar vintage-looking, worn-looking, but readable sign that would say things like espresso, or coffee, or tea. I'll let Paul Berube walk you through what the sign will actually say. But the idea is to not just advertise the cafe more, but to bring back that look that existed here in Nashua, and in many cities across the country. You can see pictures of old cities where you can see either the faded lettering, or that's been revitalized, to create a sense of history and an aesthetic that I think is appealing to people. That's the intent here. So from the Historic District Commission point of view, and from mine, again, as an alderman and as a member of the Historic District and Ward Three, I think that development, bringing something back of the history of Nashua, I think is important. It's much like what the city decided to do with the chimney down there. We have that mill yard on there. It doesn't refer to anything that's a business down below, or any activity that's going on there anymore. And in fact, we didn't repaint it, we just cleaned it up. But it has the faded look, and it creates an aesthetic that has an appeal. And I think that's the intent here. So I would encourage you to consider it from that standpoint. It's not so much advertising as it is, in my mind, bringing something back of the old look of Nashua. I think it would do well. I would listen to the five points. One of the things that I think is beneficial from this kind of activity is the increased value. I think there is increased value to a community if we embrace the authentic history that existed, and kind of revitalize that, bring that back. Not that we're going to return to the old days, you know, the old days are gone, but there's, if we can develop an authentic sense of place that people are drawn to, and that history seems to be the kind of thing that attracts people to downtown. If we can do that, I think that we'll succeed as a city, and I think the values, not just around Franklin Street, but anywhere else, will increase as downtown, the appearance of it increases. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman Shoneman. Are there any questions for the alderman? I think we're all set, no questions. So with that, I'll close the, temporarily close the public hearing on case number nine, and get back to our regularly scheduled agenda, which is the land at Lynn Street. So I'll make a motion, we had tabled this from two meetings ago, just as a reminder, and we had tabled it with the statement that we're going to try to get more information from staff, and then we would have a public meeting here, not a public hearing. And so with that, I'll make a motion to remove from the table the case at Lynn Street. Is there a second to the motion? Mr. Shaw, any discussion on the motion? A show of hands in favor. So that is off the table, and we'll get underway on the public meeting. So we've received a rather lot of information from staff, I'd say, and I guess I'll just...
Especially the email that we received from Corporation Council, that's probably the main piece of evidence. It's a page-long email from Attorney Leonard. It gives a fairly detailed description of the history of his property. I also, you guys are also interested in paper streets. It'll be a write-up by a noted land use attorney and author in New Hampshire that wrote some good articles about that as well, so...
So with that information in hand, I guess I look around. Is there somebody who would like to jump out first?
I'll jump out.
Ms. McKay, how about it?
Okay. I have a couple questions, or a couple comments. In looking at, and I did look at the property, but even before that, my thoughts are this. First, in ownership of that property, follow the money. Who's paying the taxes on that? And in all the information we have, there's nothing about what's actually on the abutter's deeds. Where their property lines begin and end, there's, you can see on the one property if you're facing, because the sign says Virginia and Connecticut, right where it intersects. And the property here has a lot of flora, fauna. I mean, really, it's pretty. It's really landscaped well. And the, and there's bushes that go along that curve. However, if you go halfway in, there's those rocks or the cement. Is that the actual boundary line? And do they own to the boundary line, or to where they have their trees? And so it's not quite clear. I think definitive ownership would be established. Other than that, the property, it's so small, I don't under, in my humble opinion, it would be difficult to drive a car up through there to put a driveway. But those are my, right off the top, comments.
Right. Yes, I'll say, I don't know if I can answer your question, but I do feel the same way about the property lines. But anyway, I don't want to hog the conversation. Is there somebody else who, Mr. Shaw, would you like to...
No, I'd like to just wait.
Okay. Mr. Lionel?
There is no paper street. I mean, the material that we've received makes that clear. There was, you know, nothing in the Bergeron's original deed that called out a paper street. There's no documentation the city has that this was ever intended to be a paper street. And even if it was, because it's been more than 20 years, it would, that would basically get pulled off the table. That strip of land is very narrow. The lot, this land lot was an unbuildable lot back when the Bergerons bought it. It is still an unbuildable lot, for multiple reasons. If a driveway was put in there, and it's not clear that legally that could be done, one of the documents we received suggested that the, that strip of land might actually be divided between the two adjacent lots. But that driveway would be right in front of number eight, Virginia. It would decrease the property value of that house and of the other one on the corner. And I think it also would, the intention for them to build a house there and obviously sell the other one would fall afoul of the prohibition against splitting lots of common ownership. So I, the, all of the material, I was obviously not in favor of it before, and everything I've seen since then even reinforces that.
All right, thank you. Maybe I'll jump in next, if you don't mind. What gave me pause at our last meeting was the discussion over the GIS map here, because that, you know, lot looked really not much different than, say, the one at the other, the intersection of Vermont and Virginia Drive. When I had site-walked this prior to our last meeting, it was prior to me getting a package, and I had only been on Lynn Street. I hadn't been around to Connecticut and Virginia. We had heard some testimony about that from the applicant, about how maybe there was perhaps some overbuilding by the abutters on that. When I went to that intersection of Connecticut and Virginia, I was, I was kind of shocked because I thought, wow, you know, it's, it wasn't, it wasn't as I was thinking I would see from the GIS map. I was feeling like Ms. McKay, in the sense like, if, if it's a paper street, which the data says it's not at this point, you know, that would be bisected, so half of that would be on this lot. And I'm like, it just didn't seem like it's going to work for me, plus the topography. And I feel it's, it's the burden of the applicant to provide a package, or an application that meets the criteria. And I, I was surprised at all the work the city did, and it was, it was, I almost felt like, woo, you know, we had the kind of taxpayers doing that almost on behalf of the applicant. There was an awful lot of time put in on that. And so, I mean, there's, to me, there's a lot of emotion here, because I hear where the applicant's been there for a long time, and is kind of anticipating doing this at this part of their life. You know, and that really pulls at, at me wanting to approve this, but I don't see a, a, a plan. I mean, something that would, I think would be meritus of approving would be, say, if we had an engineer plan by an engineer that showed this is where the driveway's going to be, and, and yeah, these abutters have overbuilt, and so that'll have to go away because they're on, you know, my applicant's property, and, and I'm looking at something that says, yeah, that works. But I'm seeing something that my gut says doesn't work, and, and, and I'm not in support of that as I sit right here, but I'm open to hear other folks. And that's where I'm at. Mr. Boucher?
I didn't bring it with me. Do you have the original letter from the Corporation Council?
I'll bring it over.
I only have just the...
Yeah, I just wanted to look at that. Thanks.
Can you relax? Do you need... Do you need to relax? I'll sit down to the chair. Starts at the bottom, goes over.
I remember correctly, there would be, am I, am I reading that correctly, that there is this, really this imaginary line, or there's a line that's actually in the middle of that, what we think is a paper street, and the two lots are actually adjoining?
Well, I, I, I'm not a lawyer on this, but I'll say the, whenever there's been a paper street before us, that's what's always happened. When it's been discontinued, it's, it's divided down the middle, and the abutting properties on either side, you know, take ownership of it. Typically, their tax base, their, their property value might be upped a little in the books because it's a little bit larger. That's usually sought-for process, I think. When it is, when the process is approved, that that paper street is given away, I don't know if that's the right word, or dissolved into the abutting property. So yeah, it's bisected down, down the middle.
So is, so I'm just trying to get a feeling for if that was what the opinion was in the end, in this case? Because when I read the history there, right, it, it tells you the history, but seems to get convoluted, and I don't know if there's really a commitment to one or the other, it just kind of says, this is what it was before. There was a, not a, not a paper street, but I don't know what they call it there, right? And then, and then in the 60s, right, something else happened. So I'm trying to understand what the transition is, and what, what actually now, in their mind, or in what they believe, corporate council believes, is the, what they would believe exists at this point. Is it really the abutting of the two lots that they're at the quote-quote centerline of that, of that once paper street common property, whatever you want to call it?
That was my reading.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say, like, I interpret that as, it was a paper street, you know, years have gone by, so it's not a paper street. There's really been no action on it.
I don't know if it was ever actually, I mean, to me, a paper street is something that says, okay, we, because there's one near, near where I live, and it was actually, you can see it on the GIS maps, it's named, although it's never, it was never built. And in this case, there was no street name there, no, it was just this strip of land that did, that didn't belong to either, either lot, according to the GIS map. And so I don't even think it qualifies as a paper street, but I think it then, would then fall into the, you know, land of no clear ownership and would get divided. Even if it was a paper street, as, as the Corporation Council said, after 20 years, that designation basically dissolves.
I would think that if either abutter really wanted to take action and say, "I like this property," my guess is they could probably self-initiate and make that happen. I wouldn't see why the city wouldn't want to sell some land that's not used and get tax base out of it. And, and even if it's not by definition a paper street, I would think that it would, it could still be divided into the two abutting lands. And I don't think, you know, one abutter would get 100%, and the other would get zero. I just think it would always go into the middle, because that's the way it is. is. So that's, my take is they could acquire 50% of the way over.
So bottom line, I think, did I, did I get the reading that the city says, we don't really own this?
I, I don't know if, I, I understand.
They say right in it that they don't believe it's a paper street, nor is it an accepted street or any city right of way at all. And that it actually just belonged, it belongs to lots three and not, lots three and lots nine, which is to the south of this so-called strip. It's not like a half and half.
So lots three and nine, that's why we don't have lot numbers here on this map. And that's why I'm just trying to, which, which lots?
It's the lots, um, it's the lots, it's two and four Carolina.
Oh, yeah.
Just, it's just part of their land. That's what the attorney's office thought. And it's not a right of way at all, a paper street at all.
So that's the, that's?
That's what she says right in her first sentence.
And again, refresh my memory, is it clear how we determine that or is it just what we believe is?
I don't think it's our call.
Well, I'm just, I'm just going with, with what our-
No, no, I understand.
-legal department said. And I, I'm not going to dispute or argue with what they said if that's, that's above my, um-
So-
Pay grade.
Pay grade, well, it's above my knowledge of research to look at this.
Yeah.
So, right, so I understand. So, so with that said, and I understand what Mr. Fox is saying, so with that said, if we can't, if it can't be clear that lots two and four specifically own that property, then I'm not in a position to deny the request. And the reason is, is that if in fact it is something that is, is to the center line, I would argue as little as it is, it does have access to Virginia or in Connecticut out at the corner. Okay? Now, you know, when you look at the physical street and the property, obviously what we don't, what we don't see, right, as laypeople sometimes is where the real bounds are, right, of the street, of the city, of the, of the right of way. And so of course, if you look at this map, it's very clear what that is. So what I'm struggling with is without a clear definition now of who actually owns the prop, that property. And if it's not clear that two and four own it, and I, and I know that that's maybe what that's saying, but I don't know if that's based on the best knowledge that they have, but not emphatically saying, hey, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stake my reputation and, and everything I have on that, then, then I would say, okay, now we fall back to, you know, really, maybe it's reasonable that that strip of land really should be, is really split in half. And then I would argue then back that there is access, not, not pretty, but there is access to that lot. May not be what anybody wants, but you know, right now we're just, I'm just talking about, about access. So it doesn't become landlocked unless we determine or somebody can say specifically that lots two and four own that strip of land.
But there's, there's more to it than that though. I mean, first of all, we can't, we can't make an assumption that it is split down the middle. But even ignoring that, let's, let's just say that it was so that they had maybe about, what, 10 to 12 feet or so to the corner. There are still other rules in the city code that, that would prohibit a driveway at that location. And it would be running in front of the lawn of number eight Virginia. And I don't see how one can argue that that would not depre, degrade the property values of eight Virginia, if not also four Connecticut.
So I would agree with you with what you just said because I'm not making assumptions split in the middle. I'm just saying as an alternative to the other fact, so there's three, to me, there's three ways of looking at this. Four and, uh, two and four, lots two and four own the property. It's, or it's maybe split in the middle, or it's literally a, a piece of property that need, nobody owns, but the city is saying, hey, we don't own that. And I think that's what they're saying. I understand what you're saying about the driveway going in front, but again, if we look at really what the right of way is, it's not really going in front of the lawn of, there because I would argue with, that there is a distinct corner on that property. I mean, that's just kind of how I'm looking at it. But I do understand what you're saying.
All right, thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of actually with Mr. Boucher on this in that, I mean, this strip of land, if I just go first off just by what GIS is showing me, it says the city still owns it. Next question is, there's really basically four properties that are specifically alongside this, this strip of land that goes from that corner of Connecticut and Virginia back out to Taylor. As was kind of noted earlier, there might be an assumption if it was going to be divided up and kind of first right of kind of refusal would seem to potentially allow all four of those abutting properties to have access to their portion of it. But what I'm wondering about is there would be four deeds specific to these four properties that are going to specify dimensions that either go to the boundaries of as basically shown here on GIS or some out, somewhere else in this. But to me, what it looks like from here is that this property has rights to access a piece of city property that is connected to city roadways. And if it is potentially allowed to be divided by the adjoining properties here, there would be this 12 feet, 15 feet, whatever it works out to be, because it actually, to me, it actually, just trying to do some quick measurements again here, it almost looks like, I know, I think we were saying it's about 25 feet, but I'm not sure we've ever gotten an official measurement on it. So it's somewhere in probably 12 to 15 feet of, if you split it down the middle. But the concern I've got is that, I know there were some arguments made by one of the abutters and I think Mr. Lionel, you felt that that was compelling, but the thing about adjoining ownership of, of two lots, my understanding from that was when they were undeveloped. And in this case, we have an undeveloped lot and a developed lot. So it seems that this lot could still be sold off as is, as a single standalone lot and it should have access to a right of way, a city right of way. But even more so, by construct, it looks like they already should have some access based on what appears to be the city-owned property and the access to city street. It might be ugly. There might be an aesthetic here that's not very nice for number four Connecticut or number eight Virginia, which I do think needs to be considered. But if we're, if we're, if that's perhaps the driving factor when reality is we're preventing the usage and access to this lot, then I think there's maybe a, a good argument that will, could be exercised as follow-up and going into the courts if necessary. So it's not, you know, we, we can't make that final determination if somebody wants to go there. But I'm just concerned that we're, we're preventing kind of this landowner from the rightful use of his property.
Mr. Lionel?
If I, reading the letter from the corporation council correctly, this strip of land does not get split down the middle. It actually is an extension of two and four Carolina, which would mean that the Bergerons don't own any of it. And there is no, I, I do not agree that we have an obligation to provide access to every possible square inch of the city. When, when this area was constructed, this was an unbuildable lot. And as I said earlier, building on it would violate other parts of the city code.
Could I interrupt?
Yes.
Can you say what that is? Because you've said that twice and I don't know what you're referring to.
There is, there is, I, I don't have it in front of me. It's actually was referenced in one of the other, well, I'll see if I can find it because it was another letter. But, uh, there is, it may not be in, in this packet. There is a code that says that if two lots have common ownership, that you can't, two separate lots have common ownership, you cannot sell them off individually. Now, I think Mr. Fox had a slightly, that's my interpretation. Mr. Fox seemed to have a slightly different interpretation of that. Could you, um, is that like?
It's 190 dash 121 was, and it was, it was spoken to and I, I believe when I looked at it, the code last time when we were talking about this, it actually says, I believe about the, did it say something about undeveloped or?
Well, it actually, yeah, it said, if the owner of two or more contiguous undeveloped lots with substandard dimensions wishes to build upon one of the lots, the lots must be combined. I don't know if that applies.
That's, that's not the text I was referring to.
Okay, because yeah, that's just-
The text that was quoted in the letter seemed to quote from it, but left out that part of it. So it says, "Where any nonconforming contiguous lot or lots were held in common ownership on or after October 14, 1976, they shall not be sold, consolidated, or transferred to eliminate the common ownership unless they are sold, consolidated, or transferred so as to create a conforming lot or lots where possible." I believe it was part of that, that code, but the part that wasn't quoted by this letter didn't, didn't note that it was about the non-developed lots. And to me, that totally flips it because I was with you when, when you first brought this up and it had been in this, this correspondence. And then when I saw that it's about two undeveloped, that completely changes because we have one developed and one undeveloped lot. So I believe it's no longer applicable.
I, I didn't read it that way. I didn't read that the text of undeveloped applied to this sentence, which is a different sentence.
Ms. McKay?
When we had this presentation initially, Mr. Bergeron stated, though it was not in the deed, that in oral communications, he was told when he was going to purchase the second lot, that he would be able to have access or he would be able to have a right of way. And so we do have competing interests here. For me, it's gut-wrenching, heart-wrenching not to be able to say to someone, this was your understanding when you purchased this property, you should be able now to do what you were assured you would be able to do. And yet, there's no real data in front of us that says the property is owned by whoever. The city is saying, no, we don't own it. And in that case, anything prior, I think, did she say 1976 or after 1976? If you go 20 years, then the property just reverts to the abutters. So I don't know how that goes. Does somebody have to survey that property? Does an engineer have to come in and look at it? Do you have to look at the deeds of all the properties to see exactly where the boundaries lie and if there's a gap somewhere? It seems like we have more questions than answers and I'm not sure if we shouldn't table this again so that we get some answers or at least allow Mr. Bergeron the opportunity to connect with someone who could survey or an engineer or look at the deeds and exactly delineate out what is the actual property lines.
Mr. Lionel?
Is it my understanding that if we denied this request and the facts were substantially different, another requ, another request could be made? Is that right?
I, I want to jump in and say, I am feeling as just articulated by Ms. McKay. We got a lot of information from corporate council, but it wasn't perhaps an answer that said yes or no. And I guess, I think this board was looking for a yes or no, is this split down the center? And I said, darn, you know, it's, it, it moves us a little further, but there's not a definitive, uh, stake in the ground one way or the other here. And, and I was, and I'm like, I, I, I wrestled with the idea of what's in my head because I should do with this. And, and what I feel is that with the Fisher v Dover test, we, I don't have a lot of information from the applicant, I don't think we, any of us do, as to how this would look or how doable it is or what the, the situation is. I think it speaks volumes when Ms. Leonard says, and I'll quote it right here, about getting utilities is a private, real property matter and does not involve the city. So at that point, she's saying, you know, it's, it's really, it's, it's, it's a private matter and, and I'm not going to get any further, I'm not going to turn over that rock. I'm, I'm stopping here and I can't blame her for that. So I look at a Fisher v Dover test in this because when I felt uncomfortable, or I, I still do as I sit here approving this because we don't have the data, I don't have the data that I feel is sufficient. Say if a certified plot plan were to come in and say, well, here are the boundaries and this is where the driveway would be and this neighbor, you know, put this fence in this garden here and, 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 or whatever and shouldn't be there and there's, and then Mr. Fox could say, okay, we have a driveway request that's this and it's all in front of us. That to me is, is new information and I would feel that we should, you know, it, it meets that test and we hear the case again. So where I'm at at this point in time is that while I was wrestling with the table, I'm feeling of not, I, I don't, I don't feel I'm able to approve it right now. I don't know how the others feel, but if this were denied, I'd be open to hearing it if there was real data that got, came before us that we don't have now. That's just me.
Yeah, that, that was what I was getting at. That, that my suggestion is we deny this request as it is, we ask the Bergerons to meet with property lawyers, surveyors, get this mess cleaned up so that there is definitive information about who owns which square inch of land and come back with a plan, an actual plan, an engineer's plan for what they're going to do that's sufficiently different facts from what we have here, we would hear it again. No problem with that.
Ms. McKay?
I feel like we should table this rather than deny it because a denial is a statement and I'm not ready to make that statement. I'm not ready to vote one way or the other. I would have to say, I don't have enough information. And rather than deny somebody what they've asked for when we all know what we're doing is finding a way to ask for more information, I would just do it the, I don't know, the parliamentary procedural way and table it and give the applicant the opportunity to do just what Mr. Lionel suggested.
Can we do that? I thought the, if table it, it would simply, we would just be talking against, amongst ourselves again and not get more information from the applicant.
Well, you can table it because it sounds like there's still a lot of information that the board doesn't have to really make a, you know, the proper decision. There's a lot of answers out there that we still have to have. If you table it, if, there's two outcomes. Either you table it to a date certain in which the board and our staff anticipates answers and plans and more information by a certain date to get to you guys. But I, I, I don't even know when you would table those two because I don't know how long it's going to take to hire somebody, to get staff on board for them, to hire a surveyor, a land use attorney, engineers, to draw up something like this. That could take quite a while. That could take six months for all we know. I don't know. I don't know when you'd even think to table to, but it wouldn't be, I don't think it would be soon.
Question, based on your information, Carter, could the applicant withdraw the application without prejudice at this time, not have to repay for a whole new application process and give himself the benefit of as much time as he needed to accomplish this?
They could withdraw it, but without, without a date certain of a withdrawal- They could withdraw it, but without, without a date certain of a withdrawal, we would still have to advertise this case all over again.
So then if we were to say, okay, this is the end of October, if we were to do this into January, could that be done? Or does it have to go within this calendar year?
It gets kind of, um, it gets tricky when you, when you table something so far in, in advance, because it, it puts the neighbors and the abutters in a position where they'd like an answer. I'm sure the, the applicant themselves would like an answer, or get this resolved one way or the other. It's all what the board wants to do. I mean, you, you could do both, really. I don't know if any, which way is better than the other, but.
On, on the discussion of tabling, if the board were inclined to table, my feeling would be that we would table it to a certain meeting. And I guess, I, I don't think like six months. I, I'm thinking of December or the first meeting in January. Because I, I think there's a message that the board will need, we, we got, we need closure on this.
I agree.
You know, and so if, if there was a, uh, if the board was inclined to table it, I would say either to December or January. And, you know, I, I think that if the applicant wanted to engage those resources, that could be had in that timeframe. But what do you, what's that, Mr. Falk?
I just, I think with the complexity of this, I don't think this is an easy little area we're looking at. It, it may take, I think it, I think it's going to take a while. I mean, we, we talk to applicants at, in City Hall all the time, and for some very basic, straightforward issues, and they may not come back for a couple of months, because the time, the time, the time it takes to actually talk to different surveyors or land use attorneys, interview them, see what their fees and charges are going to be, by the time they look at the research, get information out to their, their staff and their, their crews, to get this information written up and submitted and analyzed, it, it does take some time, and maybe they can get it done in, in sixty days. I don't know. But I, I would think it's going to be a longer, that, that's my opinion.
I have another question.
I may be wrong, but.
No? It has nothing to do with that? Could the applicant go to City Hall records, wherever the records, the deeds are kept, registry, and get the deeds for prop, his property, the abutters, and look at the boundaries? If this piece of property is not mentioned, they come back and they say it's not mentioned, and we have a whole lot of work to do. But if the property is included, then we know the answer. We're going to find out the answer based on a real document. I think in order to make an informed decision, we need real data, and we don't have that right now. And I think then it would be incumbent upon the applicant as to whether he was going to move forward or not based on the information within the deeds.
We would need a certified plot plan that showed the, the boundaries. The deeds will simply say, starting from this corner, you go this number of feet. That's not going to tell us anything. We're not qualified to make that judgment.
Mr. Boucher, I think.
I, I, I'll, I'll yield to Mr. Carter, but I was just going to ask, when GIS was initially instituted, right? My experience with GIS is that you have specific bounds and dimensions, or dimensions, right? That get inputted based on records that you have.
That's correct.
So, so, you, you know, this is pretty linear, this is pretty linear, right? This is not something that looks kind of odd, right? And this is my opinion, right? So, you know, sometimes I believe that sometimes the lack of information is sometimes information in itself. So, you know, I'm trying to recall discussion and testimony, and I don't recall anybody disputing the fact that there was a strip of land there, you know, I, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm just trying to recall. I don't recall any abutter saying, hey, that's my property, or, you know, or I completely have, have enhanced that part of the property. So, you know, it could be, you know, again, could be that the fact that there is no information is that truly, this is kind of like, you know, maybe, just kind of something that was forgotten, but it's there. So, you know, we, we could have, there could be surveys and all that and come back with the exact bounds that there is right here, right? And I know that we would love to have it perfect and definitive. But if we look at currently what's going on, I, I don't believe that anybody's really developed or taken over all that property that's in that strip. It's, you know, it's in its state that it is right now. So, then I would be, again, maybe inclined to say, oh, that could be an argument for the fact that there is something that exists there. And, you know, there's just not any knowledge, or there was never really a good record-keeping to say exactly what that was. But I go back to when GIS was, was put in, it's very technical, right? So if they're off, there is a tolerance that they're going to be off by. I think it's a me, uh, one meter maybe at, at one time when they do this, but basically, if they put it in there, somebody had to have some dimensions to put that in there. And they must have got it from somewhere. They didn't, you know what I mean? They just didn't take that out of thin air, so. Just my comment.
So I, I think where we're sitting are two that might be willing, wanting to approve, two that are wanting to deny, and one that wants the table, if I'm reading that right. Did you have something to say?
I, I had a comment a few minutes ago. I was just going to expand a little bit on what Mr. Lionel said with deeds. Some of the newer deeds may be a little bit easier to read, but some of these older deeds where they reference stone walls, they, they reference a tree in the corner of so-and-so's property that lived there a hundred and fifty years ago. You know, stone walls get moved, trees get cut down. Some deeds are not really the easiest thing to read for a layperson. You may be able to read them and kind of understand them, and say, oh, okay, I can really kind of get a picture of where this is. But if you're not qual, really trained and qualified, like a surveyor or maybe an engineer, to really understand someone's deed and how it compares to and add, or how it fits in with other deeds around it. So you have four, four properties like in a square, how they all, they all should match and meet. It's, it's not an easy thing to do, and I'm just, I'm, all I'm really saying is that they're not the easiest things to look at and understand and really interpret correctly, and it'll stand up in front of a court of law. You know, I don't know, you know, the background of the applicant, whether they have the ability to do that. Maybe they do. But I'm just saying it's, they're not the easiest things to read, especially these really older ones. Because they don't, they don't, they, they reference latitude and longitude, they reference a lot of meets and bounds descriptions. They're extremely technical, extremely technical.
I guess I just had one other thought I wanted to throw out is, uh, I, I, I see this as Mr. Lionel had stated a bit earlier, that, but I, in a slightly different way. This piece of land has served as a usable property, a nice backyard since it's been incorporated. So I guess I, I, I tend to disagree with Mr. Shaw saying, I don't see this as like as a taking of land or rendering land useless. This has served just fine for what it's been since it was created. And so I, I don't see it so much as, as, as like a taking of a land or leaving land useless. It's been a, you know, a workable backyard since it was created and is that way today. And if this weren't approved, I think my expectation is it would remain that way, you know, for this or the next owner. But I guess in consideration of your request to table, I mean, I'm open to that. But I, I think we need to have a date. I'd prefer to have a date certain, or, or would, I, I mean, I guess, just trying to move this along, I, I still think we have kind of two approves, two denies, and a, and a table.
And an abstention, yeah. So we're not going to have a.
Just in, in the process, I mean, is, isn't it true that if we table it, we can't get more testimony from abutters and?
Well, we could table it and actually open a public hearing again, because I think that's what we're asking for. We did not get definitive information from corporate counsel. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, it gives the applicant another opportunity to provide this information. If abutters, you know, would probably bring them back out, of course, we could incorporate all the testimony of before so the abutters wouldn't have to say the same thing over again. I, I think we, we really need to incorporate all the minutes from before, so we're only seeking new testimony beyond what was provided. If we want to go to a table and.
Would it get advertised again?
Not if it's, not if it's advert, not if it's tabled to a date certain, we wouldn't have to. But if it's going to be a couple of months down the road, we, we probably would advertise it again.
I, I don't think that denying the request with a proposal for restructuring the request and coming back before us is any kind of negative view towards, towards the applicant. It's, we're giving them a chance to work within the process and show us that they have the legal right to put a driveway there. Because right now, we don't know that.
That's my point. We don't know it.
Yeah, we can, but the table, we typically, we table it to, as everybody's saying, a date certain, and we have no idea how long it's going to take to get that information. I don't, I, I, more with Mr. Falk, I think it's going to take three to six months to get all of this type of data put together and a plan drawn up that we can look at and say, you know, and know what we're doing. Right now, we don't know.
Mr. Shaw?
I'm actually really uncomfortable with essentially guaranteeing that we would look at something as qualifying under a Fisher v. Dover and be able to rehear it. And I understand the intent, but we don't know that Mr. Bergeron will be able to come back if we deny this case. Perhaps he goes out and does all the research and spends three to six months and however many thousands of dollars, or whatever it takes, and determines that essentially that strip of land, while he was kind of referring to it as a paper street, but this idea that he had right of way there, if he's able to ascertain that essentially nothing's changed, that that strip of land is still owned by the city, and the argument is that he has rights to the right-of-way access to that city street, I'm not sure this would qualify under the Fisher v. Dover, because it would look an awful lot like the same request. So I'm a little concerned that we're assuming that the research would bear out something maybe very different, or there'd be a lot more specifics, or we'd have engineered, you know, plans or that kind of thing. But I'm not sure that we really know and wouldn't be faced with, we wouldn't be able to rehear it, because it would be substantially the same case. And the other part, the things I'd just like to note is that it's not that I want to approve this, and I'm still not even sure when it comes down to it, I would approve it based on the merits of the case. But I actually still think that, looking at this, there's a huge question as to what is going on with this strip of land? And who actually owns it? And despite what Corporation Counsel came back with, it's not clear that what, what that assessment was fully based on and why, because it, it, I don't know, it just, to me, it doesn't, it wasn't clear that it should have only gone to those two abutters, and why the other two properties wouldn't have the equal rights to that same. So I'm left with a lot of doubts about this. I also agree, I think, I think, yeah, the multiple months, I think it would definitely be January. We don't even have a late December meeting, so we're talking about six weeks or seven weeks if we try to do it in December. So I think we're automatically into January or later. I'm not real keen on tabling it because of this long timeframe either. I just think I want the board to be a little bit mindful that what we're talking about. And let me throw one more thing. The idea of tabling, though, and getting more of the information out is not necessarily unlike a rehearing request, which was what would happen if somebody came back and said to the board, you know, heard in our judgment, if we did decide to approve or deny this case right now, and there was additional information that was, was attained and we heard it again. In one sense, by tabling it, we don't go through that potential extra step, and we, we, we look at things and say, we don't believe we have all the information we need to be able to really judge this case. And I think that's where Ms. McKay is at. She's saying, and I'm kind of with her in that regard. To me, a huge part of this rests on what the reality of that piece of land is, so.
Any thoughts? Maybe I'll jump in. I, I feel, I, I guess, I feel differently in terms of if, if a certified plot plan was to be had, part of the research of that is whether or not there's rights to that street. And if the situation is, there would be if it's, the paper street is conveyed, which hasn't been done yet, that would be part of the action that would have to be fulfilled. So to me, if we got a application that would say, I, I think it's going to be almost no different than this or no new information, or there's going to be a certified plot plan that's, that's, has concurrence as part of that with City Hall that says, this is a go, this is a street. And to me, so I see the Fisher v. Dover thing as, I, I'm, I didn't mean to give the impression like anything that comes before us on this is going to meet that test. I, I, I think that the criteria for the test remains exactly the same, is, is there substantially new information or a change in the neighborhood? I think there's going to be a change in the neighborhood, but new information for this. So I, to me, I, I wouldn't worry about, I, I think we could answer that. I think we'd have five opinions on that if that came before us again. That's just my thought on it. I guess, I say, Ms. McKay, thoughts on, on it?
My thoughts on it?
table versus deny?
I would rather table something, which means hold, hold the phone a little bit. Let's come back with the information. Looks substantially better than saying, I deny. Now you come back and, and give me everything that I would have given you under a tabling. A tabling maybe is the kinder or gentler way to do it. I just, I'm not ready to deny something with the lack of information that I have right now. But I can not approve something with the lack of information I have now. My problem is, this is not, it's as clear as mud. It's not clear. And so for me, there needs to be more. Now, say you table it to that first meeting in January, and the applicant comes back and says, I couldn't find anything, I didn't get anything, you know, this is it. Well, then when this is it, we have to make a decision then, I suppose. But I'm not faced with this is it right now. I'm faced with an opportunity for somebody who has a very, very strong vested interest in making this work, and who was under the impression many years ago when the property was purchased, that he would have this right. So if we're going to deny someone, one of their rights, I think we need to have as many facts as we can possibly ascertain. That's just my humble opinion.
Mr. Shaw?
I, I was just going to suggest that Ms. McKay make the motion to table. I'll second it, and we can see where the discussion and the vote leads. It very well might go down in flames as a two to three, but I think you've already made a fairly impassioned, you know, argument for it. I'm, I'm supportive of the tabling. I'm not sure it's the ideal approach either, but I think, you know, and it might not pass. But I think we ought to see, test that out as, so that would be my, my request to.
Have at it. Speak and write at the same time.
I can speak and write, well, I want to get.
How about if you turn that to me and I'll take the notes on it?
Oh, okay.
So I'll let you.
Look and see the, the date for January. So our first meeting in January would be the ninth, if I'm. So, our first meeting in January would be the ninth, if I'm looking at this correctly.
Is it the second meeting in January? Oh, I'm sorry.
You want the second meeting or first?
I was going to say, it's the second week in January, which is the ninth.
The second week is the ninth.
Ninth, okay.
That's what I'm looking at, second Tuesday. So, I would like to make a motion on behalf of... Thank you. Okay. On behalf of Lucian G. and Mary L. Bergeron, the owners of L. Lynn Street, Sheet Six, Lot Fifteen, to table their request for the following variances: to allow a driveway within fifty feet of an intersection of two streets, Virginia Avenue and Connecticut Avenue, zero feet proposed, minimum lot frontage seventy-five feet required, zero feet proposed, and minimum lot width ninety feet required, zero feet proposed, to construct a single-family house on an undeveloped lot of record with no street frontage. It's in the R-nine zone and it's in Ward Seven, and it would, my tabling request would be to table this to a dirt, a date certain, January ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Motion is seconded by Mr. Shaw. Discussion on the motion.
I'll take Mr. Falk as a question.
I think the board should say, we table it to January ninth, two thousand eighteen, and give a specific reason of what you're looking for in the, in the table.
And...
Because, because the board wants, and then...
Okay. To amend that motion to reflect what Mr. Carter so accurately stated, was that the board is looking for more clear ownership determination around that particular piece of land.
Can I make one more request?
I'm sorry, I wasn't looking, go ahead, yep.
That we, well, or maybe it'll be up to the discussion, but that we are reopening the public hearing
Okay.
at that time as well.
I, I would concur, and I'm, I'm going to...
And I will concur, I'm, I'm still new at this.
I'll second that.
So...
Public hearing would be open at that time, and, and I think we should add that the minutes
From the original...
from the previous meeting would be included.
September twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
And the case would be re-advertised. I, I think that's a smart idea, that's kind of far in the future, so...
So, again, I'll just read what we have. We have a motion on the table to, to ta, we have a motion on the table to table to January ninth, two thousand eighteen, because the board seeks information about the ownership of the strip of land. The meeting will be a public hearing, the, the original testimony from September twenty-sixth, and these minutes will be incorporated into that, and, into that January ninth meeting. And I guess I would say, on specific ownership about the strip of land, can I say slash a plot plan that by a certified? I'll just leave it as specific information about the strip of land.
I hope they, yeah...
So, we have that motion on the table, seconded. Any other discussion? I guess I have a little bit, well, I, with the struggle of information that we have tonight, I see that, quite frankly, as, as a reason to deny, because we don't have evidence to approve. But that's just me, I understand that, and I'm supporting this table decision, because it, it does, you know, it pushes it out a couple of weeks. Some people aren't going to be happy with that, but it does give the applicant a chance to provide that. So, I'm supporting the table for that reason. Any other discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor of the table. And against the table is two, but, so that carries for the table. And, in favor... opposed is...
JP and Steve.
All right. With that, I'll close the public meeting on case number two.
Does Mr. Bergeron understand?
I'm, I'm not going to get into that.
Okay, well, he's there, so I just wondered.
All right, are we good to keep going?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to open the public hearing on case number three. The owner is Thomas and Melissa Bruno, the address, oh, I'm sorry, that was, that was re...
Yeah, to number, November fourteenth.
Yeah, that was, um...
Thirty-four Palm Street, isn't it?
Yeah, so the next is number four. It's Sally Rodriguez is the owner, the address is thirty-four to thirty-six Palm Street. The request is a special exception to expand the non-conforming use by adding a takeout food service to an existing convenience store. Hi, good evening, sir, if you'd like, if you want to hand something out, that's fine.
Thank you.
And then, if you could give us your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Ricky Tejeda. I live at Ten Pleasant Street, Nashua, New Hampshire.
Welcome.
So does Sally, my girlfriend. Um, we're the owners of thirty-four, thirty-six Palm Street, and we have a convenience store there that we've been running for about seven years now. We came from Boston over here in two thousand and ten, and me, we made Nashua our home now. First, we want to thank you for the opportunity of presenting, you know, the idea of building a kitchen into our existing convenience store. However, you may ask yourself, is this going to impact traffic and things like that? Wouldn't think it would, because I already go to the produce market to make purchases for the store at least twice a week. And you may ask yourself, well, well, how you going to get the things you're going to need for the food that you're going to sell? Ninety percent of the items we planning to sell for hot food, we already sell at the store. Obviously, not cook. So, we're just going to have to, like, let's say, increase our purchases and things like that. Delivery-wise, there's going to be no new companies delivering to the store, anything like that. I'm going to be making purchases at the same place where I do now, which is called Restaurant Depot. It's like, let's say, Home Depot, but like, for restaurant, Restaurant Depot. We're looking to obviously increase our business, but it's, what we're planning to do is obviously with the same customers we have right now. Not attracting larger cost, customer amount, like, new customers per se, with the same customers we have right now. They're the ones, like, asking for half-food and things like that. Lunchtime, it'll be like our biggest, you know, target. We're going to be closing the store at the same time. The kitchen, obviously, is going to close a little earlier, so we don't have the store running like extra hours or, you know, impacting traffic-wise and things like that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hang in there, let's see, are there any? Oh, could I ask you to spell your last name, because we may not get that right?
Yep.
T.E.J.E.D.A., okay.
And first name?
R.I.C.K.Y.
Oh, Ricky, okay, I'm sorry.
Tijada, am I saying that right?
Tejeda.
Taylor, sorry. Are there any questions for Mr. Taylor?
I guess I, I have a question. It's not, it's more of a statement, I guess, than a question, is, uh, if, you know, at first I thought, well, with this increased traffic, I look at your application, your testimony, it says you believe it'll be mostly your existing customers, and what they have. You know, that makes sense to me, because let's just say if people couldn't park near your store, you probably have a lot of walk-up traffic. That's my observation from occasionally going by.
We do, and, um, when they build the Broad Street Parkway, you know, we lost, like, our parking spaces close to, to our building, but we obviously talked to the city, and they helped us out, they realigned everything, and we have about four to five fifteen-minute parking assigned.
But it was just my sense, like you kind of alluded to in the application, if parking was a problem and people had to park far away, they're just not going to go to your store. So, that makes sense that, you know, I, I think it's going to be walk-up traffic, and I don't think it's going to be a problem with parking. It's going to be kind of a self-correcting problem, because people will just move on. So, I, I hope you don't lose a lot of business from lack of parking, but my sense is that, you know, it's, it's going to make your business a bit stronger, but not be a problem with parking, because if it's a problem, they're not going to, additional traffic's not going to come, in my opinion.
Well, I, I trust my good, good hands and my girlfriend. I should cook. So, I'm pretty sure they could park a block away and walk to the store.
All right. Uh, Mr. Shaw has a question for you.
Got a problem? And also, just in the application, I know it states both the hours of the store itself and the hours of the kitchen. I guess I'd just like to get confirmation or make sure that if we approve this, that we can just go by these stated hours of operation, so that the eight o'clock's on the most nights and the seven o'clock on Sundays, as far as especially the closing time, would be adhered to and, and not changed in the future.
Yes, for the kitchen.
Yes, for the kitchen, right.
The store hours will be nine o'clock on Sundays and ten o'clock on the other day.
I just want to make sure, because usually with this kind of thing, we, you know, we want to be clear about that. And by all intents, that's what the application indicates, but I just wanted to get that on the record clearly. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Ms. McKay, did you have a question?
Yeah, um, Mr. Shaw asked a part of it, but in looking at it, so the kitchen would be open from eight to eight, would you then need anyone else to help in the kitchen? Just one person? And basically, you're looking to just expand to hot food, what you're already providing your customers by giving them cold subs or sandwiches, correct?
Yes. I'm, I'm just going to sell exactly what we sell right now, but we're going to cook, yeah.
Okay, and you're not going to have to, or are you going to have to add another person?
The, the application is two more.
Oh, yes, we, we will.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed it.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Tahad? I think we're all set.
All right.
You can have a seat.
All right, thank you.
Uh, was there anybody else to speak in favor of this proposed addition of food service at thirty-four Palm Street? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? Questions, concerns, seeing no opposition, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts, Mr. Lionel?
I'm in favor of this. I don't, I don't, I don't see a problem. I don't think it's going to negatively impact any traffic. I think it would be boon for the neighborhood. Hire two more people, hey, that's great. And I, I think it's wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Echo similar comments, and the other thing is, I think, you know, it was a bit of, I think, earlier kind of questioning. To some degree, I think there's a kind of a self-limiting, I mean, the, the growth and the ability to service so many customers is just going to be limited by the, the size of the store as is and all. So, I think if, if they're widely successful and, and need more, you know, space, then that's actually a bigger thing, and I'm sure that can be dealt with at a different time. But I think that the, you know, the likely additional impact seems fairly minimal, and overall, it seems like a definite that positive for the neighborhood and, and, and all. So, yeah, I think it looks like a good and reasonable application.
Mr. Tjeda?
I support the applications for the reasons stated by both.
I as well, Ms. McKay.
I concur.
Mr. Lionel, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Paperwork then. I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception requested by Sally Rodriguez for the address of thirty-four, thirty-six Palm Street, the, to expand the non-conforming use by adding hot food to their existing convenience store. This is listed in the table of uses. We have determined that it won't create any extra undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. It won't have any, won't overload public water, sewer drainage. All of the special regulations are fulfilled, and it will improve the neighborhood and not impair it.
Motion on the table to approve, seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor. So, that's unanimous, so your application's been approved. We wish you good luck. Remember, there is that thirty-day window of appeal. And with that, I guess we wish you good luck on your expanded business. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case, is it actually case number four? Are we good to keep going?
Just one minute, let me catch up.
Let me know when you're ready.
Have a good night.
All right, I'd like to open the public hearing on case number five. The owner is K.C. Propco. The applicant is Sequel Development and Management Incorporated. The address is seventy-one Deerwood Drive. The request is a use variance to convert an existing school daycare into twenty residential dwelling units by keeping the same building footprint and adding two stories. This is in Ward Two, the Park Industrial Zone. Take it away. Actually, we can see that pretty well. If you, if you wouldn't mind pushing that flat again, so I don't know if there's anybody in the audience with an interest in seeing it, but we can see it here, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Peter Dolla, I'm the president of Sequel Development and Property Management, and I'm presenting the proposed project we have before you this evening. Thank you for taking the time to hear this. First, I'll start off by introducing what currently exists on Deerwood Drive. The, starting with the Bank of America up here, which is on Amherst Street in Deerwood, this lot is number seven Deerwood, which is actually our project...
You can just pull that microphone out, and, yeah, there you go.
Seven Deerwood is our project, which this body approved about a year ago. It was approved for eight condominium units, our, style condominium units. That's currently under development. Just beyond it, thirty-three, seventy-five, and seventy-seven Deerwood was another project we completed in the early spring of this year, and so completely sold out and a hundred percent complete. That was fourteen condominium units. Thirteen of them were townhome units. One was a single-family home that we completely redid that was an exist, pre-existing. Between them was the Kindergarten Facility, which was a daycare school built in nineteen ninety-six. Seventy-five feet by a hundred and twenty-five feet. It's technically a one-story building, but because of its size, it, it does have a New England-style pitched roof. It rises quite high, so it really has the height of almost a three-story building as it, as it sits now. It was an ongoing daycare center until just the spring of this year. I believe they shut it down. It's a little shy of ten thousand square feet, so I don't know the exact number of children it housed at its peak, but it was a very active, ongoing business. So, we've put this property under, under contract, pending zoning approval, and our proposal is to build more residential condominiums on Deerwood Drive, and it would be a twenty residential garden-style units, meaning eight units on the first floor, eight on the second, four on the first, or some number broken out that way. But single-level living as opposed to a townhome, where you have an independent entryway and you have two floors. This, you have a main hallway, main entryway, and each unit is one floor. What our proposal and our plan is, is we are going to use the exact same footprint and actually the foundation and the slab that currently exist. We'll demise the existing building. We will maintain the parking lot that currently exists. We'll do some repairs, and then we will re-landscape the island out here. But we're going to maintain the exact same footprint. And I want to just, I know you folks have all read this, but I just want to go through some of the details with you. The minimum lot size here is thirty thousand square feet. We have an existing fifty thousand four twenty-four. Minimum frontage is fifty, we have two hundred and twenty-one point eight. Minimum lot width would be one twenty, we have two twenty. Minimum lot depth is one fifty, we have two sixty-six. There's no maximum density, because this is a PI zone. Minimum open space would be twenty percent. We're proposing fifty percent open space, so there's going to be an enormous amount of green space here. Maximum height is seventy-five feet, will be somewhere between thirty-five and forty feet. Maximum stories is five, will be three. Maximum stories is five. Will be three. Um, so, uh, the, the property is, the building is very much gonna fit into the neighborhood. The other point I really wanna make is this was originally a PI zone. The whole left-hand side of the street as you come in is Regent Park Apartments from the seven-eleven all the way back to the airport property. It's all, uh, residential apartments. The right-hand side now starts with the bank. Of course, we've built residential, residential. The only thing that's remotely commercial on that street now is two, uh, auto repair stores, and one is an in-home business. The gentleman lives there and then repairs cars there, and the other one's, is an auto repair facility. But other than that, this entire street is now residential, so, um, more residential makes perfect sense. Traffic. We're proposing twenty residential homes. If you use four car trips a day for twenty families, that's eighty car trips. This facility at its peak probably housed a hundred and fifty children and staff members. Coming and going every day, two car trips, you're at least three hundred. So, the use as residential should be far less traffic than was a, as a school at its maximum. This is a light-controlled intersection, so, um, access to and from the street is, is, is very well-controlled with the lights that currently exist. Um, and again, it should be less traffic than, than it was as a school. One of the things we're trying to, we're going to do with this, um, uh, green space we have is the childcare facility had a number of sets of playground equipment. Most are really in good shape, so we'll end up selling off a few of those. But there's primarily one really nice set of equipment in the back corner here, which we're gonna maintain. And they have some nice canopies, which we're gonna remove, we're gonna move one of them and re-erect it near here and create a, uh, little playground area and a sitting area and a picnic area for the residents. We're gonna maintain the buffers all around. There's currently a fence that's on four sides of this. Obviously, it was a daycare, so they didn't want the children getting out. Um, so there is a, a very nice chain link fence that exists. Uh, we'll probably take some of the fencing down along the parking lot and then open that up and just make it a little more inviting for the residents. We will maintain the buffer on the perimeter. We'll take down a few of the trees to let a little more light in. We will irrigate this whole lawn. It'll be a lush green lawn, and it'll be much in keeping with the, uh, project we've already finished and the level of landscaping we've done there. And I, I know you folks are very diligent about going out and looking at these projects, so you, you've seen what we've already accomplished there and what the landscape looks like. So, it's gonna be extremely similar. We're probably gonna continue the black wrought iron fence right down through all pro, all three properties, so it just has kind of a continuous feel of that whole redevelopment of that side of the street. In terms of utilities, we're kinda fortunate on Deerwood Drive. There's a very large, high-pressure water main that runs down this street. It was originally intended to go through the airport and feed the neighborhood behind. That never happened. But, um, um, there's, there's great water pressure, great, uh, water resources. Obviously, this building already has, um, water running to it, sewer running to it. It's likely we'll have to bring in another water line for the sprinkler system, fire sprinkler system. There isn't a fire sprinkler system in this building, so I'm sure we're gonna have to upgrade for that. So, um, we will need a little bit of additional water, but it's, there's ample supply in the street. And sewer, again, is, is, there's ample supply in the street. I mean, obviously, having been run as a school, um, that's not gonna be an issue. So, I've, I've gone through a lot of information, but, um, this is the building we're proposing. It provides twenty residential housing units. These will be for-sale units. These will not be rentals, so Regent. In a microcosm, it's a great neighborhood because you have rental units on one side. These will be your lowest price point, uh, entry-level purchase units for first-time home buyers, young, single couples, young, single people. Then they'd be able to step up into the little more expensive, um, townhomes that we've already built. These are all selling, sold in the two-fifty neighborhood. These are selling in the two-fifty neighborhood. It's an extremely sought-after, necessary price point in the city. You, you can't buy a new townhome, um, or a, a home in this city for that, you know, that price point, so it's very sought after. This will be a little lower price point. It'll be underneath those, so we expect as well. It's gonna be a very sought-after price point, and it's just really something the city needs. So, again, as its own little microeconomy, it's kinda great. You rental, you buy your first one, then you buy a bigger one, and it, you know, it should reflect the way the whole city works, um, in a microcosm. I've thrown out a lot of information quickly, but, uh, I'm open to questions and go from there.
Any questions, uh, for Mr. Dahloff? I think we're all set. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this proposed twenty-unit residential unit on Deerwood Drive? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts, uh, Mr. Shaw?
I'm good with it. I think it's reasonable, and we definitely have the track record of this developer on this street. This is, I guess, round three, so.
All right, uh, Mr. Lionel?
What he said.
Uh, Mr. Boucher?
Uh, I agree also. Um, it's, you know, it's very clear that, um, that this meets. It is, there is no issues here with, with open space, and, you know, there's, uh, no issues with setbacks, and I, I think, you know, again, they're gonna reuse a foundation that's existing there, so it's not something, um, that's going to impact, I think, um, neighbors in any huge fashion. And I think that we were all concerned about the project next door, right? That was really, uh, and I think it was just one neighbor just worried about their privacy. I think they did a great job in addressing that, so again, I don't think this project will be any less, um, done well than, than the other projects have been, so I support this application.
All right, Ms. McKay?
I support it. I concur with my fellow members.
And I'm in support also. I'd just also like to say, one of the, the main reasons it's here, and we've seen this PI zone, I agree with the testimony. This street, if, if you didn't know it was PI zone, you'd never, you'd think it was residential. And, and so it, to me, it meets all the criteria, and maybe I'll hazard a motion. Make a motion to approve, uh, again, this is the, uh, the request is a use variance to convert an existing school daycare into twenty residential dwelling units by keeping the same building footprint and adding two stories. I make a motion to approve the, uh, application as provided. I think the board finds a variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, really, the special conditions are that it is a, a PI zone, but it's basically surrounded by residential. Uh, I think the board finds that it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It probably makes the, uh, property look more in conformity with the abutting properties by having this convert to residential. I think the board finds it'll not im, it'd lower, but likely increase property values of surrounding parcels with the, uh, upgrade and the new, uh, residential units planned. I think the board finds it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice is served, so again, I make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor of the motion, and that's approved, so we wish you good luck. Remember, there's that thirty-day window of appeal. I'm sure you're well aware of that. Oh, you go onto the planning board too, yep.
Yeah, we have a lot of work ahead of us still. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
All right. So, closing the public, uh, meeting on case number five, are we good to keep going? I'll open the public hearing on case number six. The owner is Delta MB LLC. The applicant is Carolyn Parker. The address is two sixty-nine Daniel Webster Highway. The request is a variance to exceed maximum wall sign area. A hundred and nineteen point four square feet is allowed. Two hundred and twenty-nine and a half square feet is proposed, and has to erect two wall signs in the general business zone. Hi, good evening. If you could pull that down. There you go, and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Carolyn Parker, three Lorion Avenue, Worcester, Massachusetts.
Hi, welcome. Would you like to walk us through your application?
Yes, um, basically, we have a new Skechers outlet, which is they sell the shoes, sneakers, and they're coming into this area. There are only other two, there are only two other Skecher outlets in all of New Hampshire. Um, they're going into the previous liquor and wine outlet store, um, where it's, it's, there's the, there's stores set back on the mall, and then this is a little strip mall that has three, um, stores in there. So, they're kinda at a corner where their, their, um, wall is on Daniel Webster Highway. They are not, um, gonna be located on the freestanding sign, so that is the reason that we're requesting two wall signs. If they were a basic Skechers, we'd be at two wall signs at a hundred and sixteen square feet. Because we're an outlet, and the way your bylaws are, is that we have to box, um, the sign. Therefore, it increases our square footage to two twenty-nine. If we didn't box the sign and we took the individual letters, we would be at a hundred and fifty-nine square feet. So, I guess it's the way you look at it. So, that's what we're looking for. I don't know if you have any questions?
Any questions from Ms. Parker? I guess I have a question. Maybe it's for, Mr. Falk. Uh, just a clarification on the boxing of the sign. And my, uh, I, I mean, I think you were just trying to explain that, but is that saying because there's an outline around the sign? Could you clarify?
Yeah, if, if you have to put a box or rectangle around the, the smallest area, you know, it's a little bit more white space that's counted in, but if you just add just the space that the individual letters take up, it's obviously a lot less, so. And we, you know, we can't do that for every, every sign. We just put a box around it, and that's what the, the area would be.
And because the Skechers is bigger, the outlet's smaller, you put the box around it, you're adding all that extra square footage.
All right, um, any questions? I, I guess, uh, I, I have a question. Um, in going by the site, I mean, I think you have a huge advantage to the other stores in that area, and quite frankly, to, to most of the stores in Daniel Webster Highway, 'cause so many with the kinda strip mall after strip mall, there's many stores in the back.
Right.
This building has always had a pronounced view up on the hill. I, I mean, it's, it's up maybe twenty, thirty feet. And when you're coming, driving south from the north on Daniel Webster Highway, I find a clear view of the store from the wall sign. And when you're driving south, even if you went past the signalized entrance, you know, uh, and there's another light right beyond it where you, you turn around, and so I guess I was, uh, struggling with the need for such overage of our code when you're right up on the street.
Right, well, like I said, um, if you took the square, if you took the, the front of the building, you know, and do your calculation, we're allowed a hundred and fifty-nine square feet. If you don't box it, we're at a hundred and fifty-nine square feet. So, because your bylaws say you have to box it, that makes us go up seventy square feet to the two twenty-nine. And we are new to the area, so they want people to see them, and like I said, there's only two others in, in the whole state of New Hampshire. We're not on the main pile, you know, the freestanding sign. There's currently two wall signs there now for the liquor and, uh, wine outlet. I'm not sure the square footage of them. I don't know if Carter knows.
Do you happen to know what the liquor signs are?
I, not off the top of my head, no. But can I just clarify the, the size that's allowed? It's, uh, in this zone, it's one and a half times the building frontage if there is a ground sign, which this property does have a ground sign. But it is two times if there's no other sign type, but the pro, it's, that relates to the property, not just the building. So, the, this property does have another sign type, so it's one and a half times with a maximum. It's a maximum of a hundred and fifty, but it's really one and a half times the building frontage. So, the building frontage is seventy-nine feet, a few inches, so the advertised area is, is actually the one nineteen point four.
Thank you. Um, any other questions? I think we're all set. You can have a seat. Was there anybody else to speak in favor of the Skechers sign on Daniel Webster Highway? Questions, concerns, opposition? Seeing heads shaking, no, so we'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts on the matter, Mr. Boucher?
I, I guess I could see, you know, the need for signs on both sides. Again, you know, we're always talking like we're familiar with the area, but if you're, if you're not, you know, I could see where you might need that. Now, as far as the overage, um, as I looked at the sign itself, um, the channel letters, right? So, so you're gonna see the facade through the letters. So, um, my, my impression is, is that, yes, there is a, you know, significant overage, but may not be as impactful as if it was, eh, if it was a box, uh, a box sign, um, with, with just a, a full panel in there, uh, with that, with, you know, with, um, you know, backlighting inside. So, uh, unless I hear something really different, um, I guess right now, I, I guess I don't have really a, a, a great reason to deny the application as it is. And again, it's, it's really because of, you know, the fact that these are channel letters and that we're gonna see that, that facade. And, you know, they did a nice job with the building, I think. You know, they did a real nice job. I, I, you know, and again, um, that's the reason. And, you know, I look at, um, you know, I think it's gonna be close to the road, right? So, so we're kinda looking at that, but, you know, then I kinda look at the scale a little bit, and, uh, I, I don't think it's, um, really, uh, as far as on the side of the building where the front door would be, I don't think it's really that big where it's like, whoa, you know, I mean, this has really hit me in the face, so. So, right now, I, 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 I'll just stand with my comments.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I, actually, I appreciate Mr. Boucher's point, and I thi, I think, uh, Ms. Parker was trying to get at this, but I, I was actually maybe not appreciating quite as much 'cause I thought it was, she was just basically trying to argue the technicality, and, well, all of our signs are judged this way regardless. But I do think your point about kinda the visual and the aesthetics is true, that I do think if it were one continuous, you know, rectangle or whatever, that kinda sign is much more kinda in-your-face. Uh, there's a certain depth and a certain kinda like blending in, so I feel like, uh, you know, that it, it really does make the overage less impactful because of just the way those are freestanding letters. And, and I think that the two signs make sense because especially if you're coming southbound. I mean, now, even though the building's right there, it's, well, first of all, that facade is really right to, uh, almost right up on, on the edge of the road as it is, so you're not gonna have a lot of chance to look at it from there. But it's the only way you're gonna see that unless you've gotten past it or turning around and looking back, so. So, I think the two signs make sense, and I, scale-wise, uh, you know, looking at these, these elevation views, they don't look immense or overboard, so I, I guess when it all comes down to it, I am, I'm more comfortable with this than I expected to be, so.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lionel?
I think this is fine. I mean, the, one needs a, because there's no sign at the, at the plaza entrance for the store. Eh, if you're coming along Daniel Webster Highway from e, really from either direction, you can't see that there's a store there unless there's a sign on the wall that's facing Daniel Webster Highway. And then when you go up into, uh, the plaza, you go up that, that very congested, uh, driveway up, up in there. Always a backup there, but that's not their problem. Then, you know, you have to look right because it's an L-shaped building, and then you can see where the entrance is. The third sign is this little tiny blade sign. Uh, it's gonna be under the canopy. So, we talk about three signs, but the third is, is just a little tiny thing. I, I think this is fine. It's, it's in character with the neighborhood.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
I concur with what's already been stated. It really is a congested area, and you'll miss it. You'll just go right by, and, um, not for nothing, I mean, if, we're gonna talk about this, Skechers is a good product, but, um, you, you wanna see it almost, and I think I understand, obviously, they want you to see that they're there, but they want you to almost catch an outlet before you hit the mall. So, it makes sense. I get it. Um, and I completely. And I completely concur. They need the signs. I like what Mr. Boucher said when he reminded us of, or pointed out to us, that you would see the facade through that sign, and it wasn't intrusive. And that was, I think, a key element. So I have to thank him for that.
All right. I kind of feel the way I was in the beginning about the overall placement of the building, but that's just me. Mr. Boucher, would you like to have your motion?
I'd like to make a motion for the owner, Delta MB LLC. Applicant is Caroline Parker. This is for two sixty-nine Daniel Webster Highway. It's in the GV zone, co-section one ninety, dash one oh eight, section C subsection one. The description is requesting variance to exceed maximum wall sign area, one hundred nineteen point four square feet allowed, two hundred twenty-nine point five square feet proposed to erect two wall signs. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. We spoke about the fact that these are channel letters and that the overall look of view of the building, that we felt that because their channel is and the facade was shown through, that visually would be less impactful than if it was one solid sign. So our reasoning behind this is, again, for those who will vote to approve this variance is that we find that even though the square footage is the overage, that we find that it's, would be less impactful than the actual numbers would dictate. It is within the span and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served. So I make a motion to approve this variance.
And that's seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor. That's four, and opposed and myself, so four to one carries, so it's approved. Good luck with your sign in the new store. Now, I'll close the public meeting on case number six. And I'd like to propose a five-minute recess. And so we'll be back in five minutes, and then we'll get going again.
Thanks, Jack. I needed that. Carter. The city's not here.
I don't know what to say.
I bet you it's downstairs.
Could be. I mean, I can make the presentation.
Oh.
He's not here. It's a, it's a very cut and dried, basic case. I'll just go up there and if you like, I mean, establish someone doing it.
Yeah.
I'll do it.
We like you. We know you.
You know, driving up into that market basket is like one of the hairiest spots of the city.
And even if you're not driving up into it, even if you're just trying to get like to Costco or something, you just sit there waiting for the traffic to clear. When that was a liquor store, that was, it was terrible to get into. I don't know if the traffic's going to be any better or worse.
What?
Sign isn't going to make a difference.
I mean, and if you look at the sizes of all the signs, most, most all of them are larger than what the code allows, especially on some of the standalone type buildings like that.
But they tend to be set way back.
They're set back and up a little bit, so. And, you know, there's two signs facing two different, you know, fronts of the building, so it may not look as bad.
I think it looks, especially because they're the channel letters, not a big illuminated box.
Big square.
Yeah.
Right.
I went by there this morning.
You know, it's funny you say that. I did my sidewalk on that one this morning also, because I said, I don't want to, I hadn't gone by DW Highway, but I go south in the morning, so when I left about five fifteen, I went down that way. You know, at five, at that hour, you can see everything.
Yeah. It wasn't important.
I was, I was there maybe about ten.
I guess Steve had the right info, except he said it was supposed to start.
Still not much traffic at ten. Well, a lot of the stores are actually opening at ten.
Not an awful lot. I could, I could.
It's raining out.
Yeah, really coming down.
Assuming you didn't take your bike today.
No, bike is at home today, thank God. Although I have had it here when it's raining like that outside and like, oh, well.
I think we're ready to get going now, because we're all back and it's the same three people. Do you want to tap on the door and see if Tim is a? All right, we're good?
We're good.
All right. I'd like to open up the public hearing on case number seven. The city of Nashua is the owner. Tim Cummings is the applicant. The address is thirty-six, thirty-eight, and fifty Arlington Street, and the request is a variance to erect a fourteen-square-foot projecting sign for the Arlington Street Community Center, where projecting signs are not permitted in the RB zone. If you'd like to walk us through the application, give us your name and address, please. Do we, do you need to spell that name for us?
Guys probably know it. Good evening, members of the board. Carter Falk, I'm the deputy planning manager with the city of Nashua. I'm here on behalf of Tim Cummings and the mayor's office to present this case. Apparently, Tim had another meeting at, down in the Alderman's meeting is what I'm guessing. This request is a sign variance in this zoning district, which is RB. It's a, basically a two-family zone. There's an existing Dr. Crisp School, and there's the old fire station, and there's this old brick building, which is now going to be housed by the Arlington Street Community Center, which is going to be a citywide benefit for all citizens to go to this community center. The sign that they proposed was advertised at fourteen square feet. It's actually twelve square feet after talking to the sign company, which is classic signs. They do really nice work. They've done a lot of, a lot of the school signs, a lot of the other community signs within the city, and they've done, I can attest that they've done a very good job. This sign, it's not lit. It's a projecting sign. That zoning district is a residential zoning district, which does not permit a projecting type of a sign. If this was faced, if this was put flat on the wall, it would be a different story. It may just need a variance for the size. But really, that's all it is. It meets the clearance as you walk underneath it. There's the proper clearance. It also meets the projection out from the side of the building, which can only be like up to five feet. I believe this one's only thirty-eight inches. It's housed on the building by a nice-looking scroll bracket, and they'll obviously get building permits to attach it to the brick. And I believe the opening on this, they've had a soft opening, but I believe the opening on this is this weekend. And I know that the mayor's office is very excited about it, and, you know, it's staff's belief that it'll be a benefit for all the citizens in the city. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Falk? I think we're all set.
Thank you very much.
A seat? I'll just ask, is there anybody to speak in favor or against this sign? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Maybe I'll jump out first. I, in support of the sign, I mean, it's the RB zone, but right here is an old building, fire station. There's a big sign for a park right, you know, maybe fifteen feet down the road. I think this is a tasteful sign, and I don't think it's out of character, even though it's the RB zone, because right here, it's an existing old brick building. And so I find it to meet the criteria myself. Ms. McKay?
I concur. I think it will be fine. It's very tastefully done, and I think it needs to be noticed. People will know where to go, and I think it'll be a benefit for the city. I have no problems with this.
Mr. Lionel?
I have no issues with this.
Mr. Shaw?
I'm in support.
Support.
Maybe I'll make a motion. I'm going to make a motion on behalf of the city of Nashua. Again, requests to erect a fourteen-foot square, fourteen-square-foot projected sign, actually by testimony is twelve point nine square feet for the Arlington Street Community Center, where projecting signs are not permitted in the RB zone. I make a motion to approve this variance. I think it's enabled, it's needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, which is repurposing a commercial building for a community center for the neighborhood. I think the board finds it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance to allow this relatively small sign in the RB zone. I think the board finds it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. I think the board finds that, you know, a community center that's functioning and viable for the community will be an attribute to the neighborhood. I think it's, therefore, it's within the, it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice is served to allow this small sign, and I make a motion to approve as presented, seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor, and so that is approved. And I'll close the public meeting on case number seven and open the public hearing on case number eight. The owner is Melissa Fowler. The address is fifty-nine Blossom Street. There's two items before tonight. One is a special exception for a major home occupation for an in-home daycare for twelve children, and the other is a variance to allow a daycare on a lot that does not meet the minimum lot size requirements for the RB zone. That lot size is six thousand square feet required. This lot size is forty-eight hundred square feet. Hi, good evening. If you could give us your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Melissa Fowler, and my address is fifty-nine Blossom Street in Nashua. I am looking, I am currently a license exempt provider for childcare. I'm allowed to have three children, not including my own. And I have two of my own children, so on a daily basis, I usually have five children. And I'm looking to expand my daycare. In order to do that, I have to go through the process of going through zoning, through a health and safety inspection, and going through the fire department for a fire and safety inspection. So I've had New Hampshire licensing come into the house already, and they gave me kind of a walkthrough of things that I need to get done and do. The fire inspector also has already come in, and they hopefully will be coming back out towards the end of November. I had to do some work for them as far as like hardwiring my smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, things like that. So I've been working on all of that stuff. I'm not looking to add any structures onto my property as far as that goes. I did add two six-foot fences with the child safety latches and self-closing mechanisms on each side of my property. I also have a four-foot fence as well. That was up prior a few years ago when I first started. I've been at this address for probably about four years doing the daycare. So four years ago, I had added the four-foot fence. And then just a few months ago, I added the two six-foot fences to be code with the city. And then I do sometimes have a swimming pool. It's an above-ground, one of the Intex swimming pools. But I put that up in June, and I take it down at the end of August, beginning of September. So that pool goes within the six-foot fence and the four-foot fence. So the kids only have access to it if, where I'm in my ratio and I'm able to use it. It has a removable ladder, so if we're not using it, the ladder stays stored in a shed. So the kid, the children have absolutely no use, no access to the pool. As far as parking, they have the whole street. I do have one parking spot to my driveway, including, I have a garage, so my car goes in there, and then there's one empty available spot. I also, my, one of my neighbors at sixty-one Blossom Street is my parents, so they have a larger driveway. So I have their approval and permission if I needed additional parking spaces that I could use their driveway as well. I've never, out of the four years, five years that I've been at this address, I've not had any neighbors complain about parking issues. It has never congested the street as far as pickups, drop-offs. Typically open from seven to six, seven AM to six PM. So children get dropped off anywhere between seven and ten in the morning. Majority of my neighbors are already at work. And then in the evening, parents pick up anytime between three and six. We typically go outside in the mornings, usually between nine, nine-thirty. We stay out for about forty-five minutes or so. And then in the afternoons, we usually will go out around three, three-thirty, and we're usually in between five and five-thirty. So as far as, you know, expanding, having the additional children, I already, I would have to add an employee, which I already have that. My mother works with me if necessary, if we're ever over. With the childcare licensing, they, if it was just me as a single employee, they actually would license me for nine children, six preschoolers and three schoolagers. Or with two employees, they will up it to twelve preschoolers and five schoolagers with a max of seventeen children. But I'm only looking to go to the twelve. I'm not looking to exceed that. And then as far as the lot size goes, the children are anywhere from six weeks to four-year-olds. Once they hit five, they're in kindergarten, so they're not in, they wouldn't be in my program. So the space that I have, they seem to all have plenty of space to, you know, play, run. They ride bikes. They have, you know, climbing structures, balls, things like that to, you know, to utilize while they're outside. And then as, I guess that's probably the extent of it.
Let's see if we have any questions. Are there any questions from Ms. Fowler? Mr. Lionel?
How much space do you have in the house that would be devoted to, to these children during the day?
I have two good-sized rooms. Honestly, I'm not sure of the exact size, and licensing hasn't come in. I haven't submitted my full application at this point to see what they'll actually approve me, because it's per square footage, per child. So, and the fire department hasn't come back in because they haven't, he was supposed to get back to me, and he has not yet with how many, because he measured both of my rooms that I use for the children. So I don't know the exact measurements, actually. So I'm not a hundred percent sure on how to read this. It's an older, I got it, it's a copy from my father.
I'm just looking for, for just a general idea, because, I mean, I've looked at your house.
Yeah.
But I can't tell from the outside what the layout is, what part of the house the kids would be in. I mean, from my recollection of years ago and when my son was in daycare, you know, there's got to be a space for napping, there's space for games.
Yeah. So basically, I have, I basically utilize my basement, and there's two good-sized rooms, so, and they have, I have two separate entrances, so I have one directly from outside. So they'll use the side yard, they come down the basement stairs, and they come into the room. And that's usually where they'll eat their breakfast, lunch, and snacks. I have two child-sized tables for the children that I bought through one of the school specialty stores. I have a refrigerator down there, and then I also have, in a, in the separate room, it's, there's other activities. I have a changing table in there. I have, and the children nap in that separate room. So, I mean, there's no door, so it's all open concept. It's kind of like an L shape down there. They have a little private section to use the bathroom, and then if they want... They have a little private section to use the bathroom and then if they want that, I have a child-sized toilet for down there. But if they want to, I can bring them upstairs and directly across the stairs is a full working bathroom that the children can use.
So, so you, what you're proposing or what you would be doing is you'd be caring for the children primarily in the basement?
Yes.
Not in, not in?
Not upstairs in my living space.
Ah, I see. And your own children are how old?
I have a three-year-old and a nine-year-old.
Okay, so the nine-year-old's already in school?
Yep, she's in fourth grade and my three-year-old is with me.
Is with you?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Questions? I guess I had a question. I mean, well, you mentioned it already. When I looked at your place, I was concerned about parking and traffic and with the lot size, I thought, geez, there could be a lot of noise on the neighbors. But you've spoken that one neighbor is your mother, so I don't think you're gonna get any complaints from her. But you haven't had any complaints or any traffic congestion and you've been at this for a while?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I appreciate hearing that. I did have that concern, but, you know, I, that's, that's good to know. Thank you for that testimony. It's persuasive to me because it puts that concern aside for me.
Yeah.
Mr. Boucher?
Just a point of clarification. So we know that, that we have these applications because they need, they need a, you know, zoning relief, right, for this, for this daycare. So per se, just because we, we give an approval for twelve, really, the, 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 the real matter of it is, is that the applicant is applying to the state and the state really determines the number of children. So I, I, I kinda had the same question that Mr. Lionel had, but the way I kinda rectified in my mind is, is that, again, they're gonna come and inspect this space and, and they may come in and say, you can't have any more than what you currently have. But really, that's not our purview. I think what we're saying is, you know, does this work within that neighborhood? You know, have, you know, any, address any of the issues with that, that, you know, about traffic or about drop-offs and all that. But I think in the end, right, it's the state that's gonna make that determination on the number of children, right? So the state trumps what we give for a number, right? So it's not like we give a number and she can use that number. Is that correct?
That is correct. According to our code, the major home occupation for daycare is a maximum of four hundred and twenty square feet, which is thirty-five square feet per child, which I believe that's consistent with the state regs. The maximum that you can have in a, in a single-family home is twelve children to watch. So twelve times thirty-five is the four-twenty. Okay.
And Mr. Falk had pointed out, I'll just read this into the record. It says, no more than thirty percent of the gross floor area of the dwelling or three hundred square feet, whichever is less, except for child daycare facilities, which may use up to four hundred and twenty square feet. So we don't know what the square footage is, but like Mr. Boucher was saying, it's, that's ultimately audited by the state and not us. So, other thoughts? Ms. McKay?
No, I, I wondered about the parking 'cause the street is not a very big street. But you stated that you have had no issues. You can use your parents' driveway, which is also a good thing. And then your own child will be included in the numbers, so, and then we don't have any say over the numbers. The state does. But if you have had no complaints and you've been doing this for a number of years, I'm thinking your neighbors are used to it and adding a couple more trips, you know, with cars doesn't seem impactful. And if it is impactful, their remedy is probably to notify the city. So I don't have a problem.
All right, no other questions from Ms. Fowler then? I think we're all set. You could have a seat. Is there anybody else to speak in favor? No, and I don't think there's anybody here in opposition. I see no opposition, so I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Maybe we've already expressed thoughts, but I'll just go around. I'll say, I was very leery at first because of the, the street and the parking, but realizing the testimony, I just think it speaks volumes also that nobody has spoken in opposition 'cause I thought noise would be a concern, but I'm not hearing it at all, so I'm okay with it as it's proposed myself. Ms. McKay?
I concur with what you said.
Mr. Lionel?
I'm a little concerned because, I mean, currently she can watch three kids that are not her own and now it will be up to twelve children, which may or may not include her own, in a, a small house and small lot. Yes, as, as Mr. Boucher said, the, the state may say, no, the, the limit is less than that, but that the neighbors haven't complained about three kids isn't to say that they won't complain about twelve kids. That's not quite, that's not enough for me to deny this, but I, it's a concern.
All right, thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I guess I do think though, at least, you know, I think a couple of things that are key, that are reassuring, basically already been mentioned, is, again, the operation, I think for, I think it was about four years is what the applicant had said, and, and as well as that we don't have any noted opposition of any kind, so we're not aware that what's been going on. And I, I agree with your concern also that it is a fairly significant scale up and, and I had the same, you know, thoughts as well that if there is, if, if the setup doesn't really accommodate the total up to the twelve children and, and Ms. Fowler might find that she doesn't want to go up that high, even if she can do that for all the other, you know, various reasons. There might be other things that don't necessarily put her at that max, but, so I think there's the safety, fire and safety type of considerations as well as the state licensing and the amount of area that's truly available. So I think the right things are in place and I, I, I remain hopeful that this is an application that will, will be positive and I, but I don't see a, a reason to, to deny it.
Mr. Boucher?
I, I, I'll, I'm in possession to approve the application. Obviously, you know, we've expressed our concerns and think we're on the same page with that. I will note that there is a, I think we might have missed it, but I'm sure that with the testimony the applicant gave, that the special conditions for the variance, right, for the, right, the childcare facilities.
Yeah.
I think she addressed every one of those and she's been in business for a while now, so number six, no sign shall be permitted except to nameplate, not seeing one square feet. I, I think there wasn't any compliance issues, we heard about it. So unless you need to reopen it, I, I would say that testimony pretty much covered those six items. But if you're not comfortable with that, then, you know, we can do something different. I think in one way.
I think, I agree. I think she's covered them all. There was no discussion on the signs, but the criteria is what it is here and I, I, I think it's a fine criteria and I don't think we need to assume that'll be violated. I think the applicant will need adhere to that. And I think it does speak to the fact that she's been in business for a while, that it's not like she's gonna need a sign for success.
Right. And I think what I'll do is, afterward on voting, I think maybe I'll just hand her this copy here, just so she's aware. I, I think the applicant is, but just to make sure that we're on the same page, that this is what she was agreeing to. But I think, again, testimony stated that.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. So what you wanna do first?
Do the, uh?
Special section first, right?
Yeah.
Use first.
Okay.
Oh, use, okay. Use, the variance.
Variance first, okay.
For the lot size.
I'd like to make a motion for the owner. I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Melissa Fowler, fifty-nine Blossom Street, requesting the following, what, a special, requesting a variance to allow daycare on a lot that does not meet the ma, the minimum lot size requirements for an RB zone. It's forty-eight hundred square feet existing, six thousand square feet required. It's in the RB zone. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than in the area of variance. It is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect the property values surrounding parcels. It is not contrary to public interests and substantial justice would be served.
So we have a motion on the table for the variance, seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion on the motion of approval? Seeing no discussion, a show of hands in favor of the approval for the variance, that's unanimous, so that passes and on to the special exception?
To make a motion to approve the special exception for Melissa Fowler, fifty-nine Blossom Street. She's requesting a special exception for a major home occupation for an in-home daycare for twelve children. It is listed in table of uses. It is in the RB zone table, code section one ninety dash thirty-six B. We find it is listed in table of uses. It will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. It will not overload public water, drainage or sewer or other municipal system. Special regulations are fulfilled, which is the childcare facilities, special conditions, which were testified, which were, were stated in testimony given by the applicant. It will not impair the integrity, be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to health, morals or welfare of the residents.
So we have a motion on the table to approve, seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion on the motion? The only point I'd like to say, maybe it's obvious, is that on point three of the special conditions, it talks about a lot that conforms to minimum dimension standards, but that's what we just approved in the variance. So that one's not being met, but we specifically addressed it right before this. Maybe that's obvious there, I just wanted to make sure we weren't getting this out. So is there any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor of the special exception. So that's approved too. So you got two approvals tonight. We wish you good luck on your proposal and Mr. Boucher is gonna have those special conditions, just so you have a copy of them to take with you. And with that, I'll close the public hearing on case number eight. I'm sorry, the public meeting and open the public hearing on case number nine. The owner is Grace Fellowship of Nashua. The applicant is Paul Berubi. The address is forty-three Main Street. I, I'm actually reopening the public hearing on this case. And again, I'll just read into the record. There's three requests before us to exceed the maximum wall sign area. Sixty-five square feet is permitted, eighty-four square feet is existing, two additional ninety-six square foot signs for a total of two seventy-six square feet is proposed. Request number two is to exceed maximum number of wall signs, three permitted, three are existing, two additional wall signs are proposed for a total of five. And the third is to exceed the maximum wall sign height. Twenty feet is permitted, two of the additional signs are proposed at twenty-eight feet in height. This is in the mixed-use zone, D and D one zone. Hi, good evening. If you'd like to come to the microphone and give us your name and your address of domicile for the record?
Good evening. My name is Paul, Paul Berby and my address is Seven Gettysburg Drive here in Nashua. And we're talking about the property block between Main Street and Front Street along Franklin is what we're discussing here. I'd like to begin by just saying I appreciated Alderman Schoneman's presentation and in how he asked for approval and, and appreciated that. Also appreciate the historic district's approval of our consideration. Our goal has been from the very beginning to help or to attempt to clean up that whole block and we've been diligently working at it. Most of you probably know that the, the properties were not bought as one unit. They were bought five while they were put in separately or purchased separately. So there are five distinct units over the course of time that now formulate the one block. So when you consider signage for that, we're talking about signage that once was five separate entities, now one entity. So I would ask you to consider that. A little more history is, is that the description is noting three signs permitted and five being requested. I would ask you to reconsider that because, you know, there are five signs existent. And so even though two of the signs are not current, there was a day where the two signs that we're looking to restore and bring back into play pre-existed. Case in point is that a prior owner of what would be called building number fourteen now, so we've got forty-three Main Street, the church, a connector behind the church, the cafe itself is eight Franklin, fourteen Franklin is the, the wall space in question. And then the last building, the Cinderblock Building, is building number eighteen Franklin Street. So what we're asking for is consideration for the two signs. There was a prior sign in two different spots that a prior owner had eggs, potatoes, butter, beans, and if you look closely, you can see that. And what we're looking to do is to drop two of the lines and then to turn around and, and just have coffee, pastries and crepes. We've shrunk the size of it. It would be weathered look in keeping with a Nashville Historic District look and, and honestly, if this sign had not pre-existed, we wouldn't be asking for it today. What we're looking to do is bring back by way of restoration that look and we're not advertising the church that way. We're not even advertising Bonhoeffer's name. We're just saying coffee and pastries and crepes and, uh, as a means of, of restoring the look of the block. And so we've been working very diligently in that and just appreciate favorable considerations.
All right, thank you. Any questions? I think you silenced us all. There's no further, cameras don't pick it up, there's no one else for positive or negative testimony, so I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Mr. Shaw?
I think this is great. I mean, this is like one of those things that just, you know, I realize we have to go through this process 'cause it technically qualifies as a sign and all, but it's, it's as much the aesthetic and almost the art and the feel and I appreciated Alderman Schoneman's, you know, kinda introduction early on and I think that helped kinda set the stage this as well. But the Historic District Commission is obviously good with it, which is a key thing for, you know, a structure like this in this part of the city. And it's really, you know, it's, it's like the indirect kinda advertising, but it's much more, I think, a nod to the historical kinda usage of buildings like this. I mean, we're all probably familiar with various places, whether it's, you know, a barn on the side of the country road somewhere that's either, you know, you know, got some sort of major, you know, slogan or whatever. It's just the kinda things that were done in the past. This is something that, you know, in a downtown like this, it fits very well. So I think it's a very nice, nice thing and I think to me it's a kinda, I understand we have to go through the process and we have to still make sure it's nothing, you know, untoward about it or problematic, but I'm totally good with it.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
I didn't even know this cafe was there. I, I think this proposal is just fine for all the reasons Mr. Shaw stated. I, I'm looking forward to trying it.
That's great. Mr. Boucher?
I, I support the application for the reasons that Mr. Shaw said and it surely reminded me of what we had heard some while back, what they were gonna do over Alice Shuster, right? Same, same idea type of thing. So, you know, I thought it was pretty good. So I think it's in character with, with everything that's been going on in that part of town.
And my thoughts are, I'm favorable to it also. I, I think it goes in concert. I, I like the, as Mr. Shaw said, kinda the old look. I was pleasantly surprised when I did my site walk last Saturday morning how much more vibrant this part of town was, 'cause it, it has been making a comeback, for lack of a better term, for some time and, and I think the application speaks for itself. I'm, I'm good with it the way it is and I'm pleased that, you know, there's a combination of this kind of old signage comeback. I think it's a good way that an old building like this can get some signage and it doesn't look in your face, it looks kinda traditional and I'm, I'm all in. and I'm all in favor of it as well. Ms. McKay?
And in the interest of openness and transparency, I'm vice chair of the Historic District, and I actually chaired the meeting. The pastor attended and gave us really a lot of in-depth information aesthetically, and that's what we were looking for. It just fit the bill. It's just, I don't know, it's so encouraging to see this happen, and you're correct. It's just, hopefully, it'll get even more vibrant. And as to the cafe, I highly recommend it, and if you haven't gone, Mr. Lionel, you should. And yes, I absolutely concur.
Should I can make a motion?
Oh, just to clarify a point that Pastor Ruby said about the, about counting the existing two old faded signs. We didn't count those only because that was from a use that's no longer there. So, the sign code does address signs that are no longer really in use or for a business that's no longer in existence. And I think the use of the potatoes and butter and flour had, was long ago, gone. So, that's the only reason why we didn't count them. And we counted the five signs, like, on the back, it says Bonhoeffer's Cafe and Espresso. That's one. We didn't count the address, even though it's a pretty big sign. And then, there's the two signs in the front, which you have the picture of it, that I was forwarded, like, says Bonhoeffer's Roastery, and the other says Bonhoeffer's Cafe and Espresso. So, we counted those two and the existing one. That's what we counted as the three existing, and then the two proposed, which is also the height in that D1 zone. You can't go more than 20 feet, but obviously, they're placed on this part of the facade of the building, which is over 20 feet. So, that's the variances, and, you know, just to clarify, that's why we chose those.
Shaw, would you like to motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owner, Grace Fellowship of Nashua. Applicant is Paul Berubi. Address is 43 Main Street. The request is for three variances. First one, to exceed maximum wall sign area, where 65 square feet are permitted, 84 square feet are existing. Two additional 96-square-foot signs proposed for a total of 276 square feet. Secondly, to exceed maximum number of wall signs. Three permitted, three existing. Two additional wall signs proposed for a total of five. And thirdly, to exceed maximum wall sign height. 20 feet permitted. Two additional wall signs proposed at 28 feet in height. This is in the D1 MU zone. The variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property, special conditions of the property. This is in the Historic District, and as noted, the Historic District Commission has already approved at the, oh, August 28th, 2017 meeting. Yes, it was approved. Thank you. To do this historic era signage that is basically what is causing the variant, these three variances. So, and there wouldn't be a means feasible otherwise for the applicant to pursue, other than the area variance, to accomplish this. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Again, noted that this is what is actually allowing part of kind of the feel and vibe, the ambiance, whatever you want to say, of the, of this area by a nod back to the way signage was done, and by even the evidence of the old faded lettering that was there from previous usage. There is no indication of any negative effects on surrounding parcel property values. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. And again, I move to approve these three variance requests.
And it's seconded by Mr. Boucher. Any discussion on the motion, Mr. Lionel?
Wouldn't it be correct for the address of the, of the motion to say 8 to 14 Franklin Street? Because that's, 43 Main Street is the church, and that's not the address we're considering.
I think it was.
Well, if you look at, if you look at the application, it says owner's address is 8 Franklin.
I defer to Mr. Falk.
It was actually just changed. That whole block is now known as 43 Main Street.
Oh, is it?
Even though there are some.
Okay.
We've had some historical old address numbers for Franklin Street, but now, if you click on that site on the GIS system, it'll all, the whole thing will say 43 Main Street. That's the only reason why we had it.
That's fine.
The answer man tonight. Any other discussion on Mr. Shaw's motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor of the motion. So, that's granted, 5-0, and we wish you good luck with the signs and the business. And the church, I guess I should say, also. With that, I'll close the public hearing on case number nine. Public meeting, I'm sorry. We have some minutes from the last meeting.
October 10th?
October 10th. Lots of folks here. Myself, Mr. Shaw, Ms. McKay, and Mr. Lionel. I've taken a look through these myself. I don't have any amendments. Do you have any amendments, Mr. Lionel?
I don't. I think maybe Ms. Boras's first name is misspelled here, if I'm remembering correctly, but I could be misremembering.
You're correct. No.
She's got it on speed dial here, I think.
I don't have it in front of me, but that's not what I remember. And I know her name is not Esther.
No, it's Estasia.
Yes, but isn't there an H in there somewhere, or is?
It's E.F.S.T.A.T.H.I.A.
Yes, T.H.I.A.
So, so noted. Mr. Falk will update and correct Estasia's spelling.
I had lots of trouble pronouncing it, but I knew there was an H in there somewhere.
Well, she will be appreciative of that.
Yes. She told me that she prefers being called Estasia.
Any other notes on the minutes? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the correction of Estasia's spelling. That's seconded by Mr. Shaw. All in favor is the five of us, so that carries. We have our, an agenda. Mr. Falk provided five cases for next meeting, which is November 14th. We're taking a look through that to see if there's any regional impact.
So, number one, right, the lot line you're talking about is the pool that's abutting the highway, right? On the left side, as you drew up Brook Village, is the pool on the left, or is it further up?
As you're coming in from Mass.
Brook Village, right?
Brook Village. There's three very big lots down there, and each lot, you really can't tell where the lot lines are. There's three large, this is the property where they just rebuilt all the buildings a few years back. So, it's on the left side of the highway as you're driving north into Nashua.
Yeah, I know. So, if you, if you actually get off the highway and you drive into Brook Village, it would be on, it would be on the left.
I'm not sure exactly where.
Okay, so it's at the beginning.
Yeah. What happens was, the same owner, the same management company owns all three lots together, the managing partner. And they got a building permit and a CO, and they got all their approvals for this pool. But apparently, it was placed just a little bit over a lot line. So, even though he owns the property next door, he was trying to refinance the property, and the banks were concerned about it. So, you know, we suggested he go for an equitable waiver, because it met all the points of law in our belief for one. So, that's really what that is. It's a, it's a, the steps that goes into the pool, a little portion of the poolhouse, fencing and landscaping and the pool deck, it's.
I was just curious if it was.
Very minor.
So, nobody's going to put up a toll booth?
Never noticed it, really, but this is the proper, you know, procedure to do.
Right, no, I didn't know if it was the one at the end, because that would, that would, and I didn't know if it was over the lot line into Brook.
Oh, no, no, it's not. It's further, further north in the property, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
With that question resolved, clarification resolved, were there any other, does anybody see any regional impact? Mr. Boucher is no. Mr. Shaw is no. Mr. Lionel is no. McKay is no, and I'm no. So, I'll make a motion. There's no regional impact. If we can just state that, I think, I don't need to make a motion for that. Yeah, no regional impacts. Was there any other business brought before the board tonight?
I believe at the last meeting, or maybe it was two meetings ago, we sent out the proposed meeting dates for 2018.
Last meeting.
And, it was last meeting. Has anyone had a, I didn't send them out again. I apologize for not sending them out in this package. Has anybody had a chance to review those or good to go as they are?
We talked about.
I had just raised the question about that September 11th, because of the possible primary election. I don't know.
Thought we were okay with that, so.
Maybe I'll make a motion to approve the proposed meeting minutes, also stating that if an election, because an election can be created, that's not now. And so, if there is a municipal, state, or federal election that is created on the night of our meeting, per our bylaws, our meeting would be the Wednesday after that.
So, we already have that in the bylaws, so I think even if it does become an issue, I think we're good with the bylaws, so that's fine.
So, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda as proposed by Mr. Falk for 2018.
Calendar, right?
The schedule, meeting schedule for 2018.
Seconded by Mr. Shaw. And show of hands, any discussion on that? Any in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
So, if there's no other business, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Mr. Lionel. All in favor? And so, we are adjourned.
9/11.
Thank you, Tim.